Frank shut off.
Good evening. Call the meeting of April 1st, East Providence City Council to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role of the council?
Councilman Fogarty.
Yeah.
Councilman Lawson.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rigo.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Souza. Council President Rodrick.
Here. The record show there are four members present, one absent. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you all. First, on the agenda tonight, we have some proclamations to award as we continue to be known as Championship City. I would ask Councilman Fogarty to make the presentations tonight.
Whoa. That's a good shot. Technical foul. Hey, that's a good one. Technical foul. Forty-year referee. I might, I didn't give any of you players technical fouls.
Councilman, you tore it apart.
No, no, that was already broke. You can hear me. Actually, I don't even need a mic, right, folks, right? All right, let's see who we have first. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the East Providence Boys and Girls Club travel team. Both of them, fifth grade, eighth grade. And the coaches, the staff. They had an excellent season from what I watched. I didn't have the pleasure of repping them, but I've repped most of those kids sitting in that audience at one time in my career and their career, especially Blacktop. But they're fortunate to play at a high level and travel. And thanks to the people of East Providence for supporting them, especially the coaches. A lot of time they give, their efforts, and the kids and the parents that helped them get there. With that said, I'm just gonna, I wanted to do a proclamation, and you can thank Mr. Damian Ramos also, because he as a leader of your group has made sure he expressed his proudness of you guys and girls, and everyone that volunteers to do this. It's not easy, getting up, playing, and I'm sure you guys all enjoy it, right? That's why you're here. And there's most of yous that play multiple sports, because I've seen you on the softball field and or baseball field, soccer. So with that said, let's see what group I have.
Players, as the councilman calls your name and you go up and get your proclamation, then walk along the front here and we just form a line, you know, face the audience. And as you get your proclamation, just work your way down toward the end here. Thank you, Councilman. Proceed.
So what do you say? I won't do them all, but what this says is the City of East Providence, us, the council, and everybody in the city, actually, is who we speak for. On behalf of the City Council, this certificate is awarded to the name, and it's based, and we'll all sign it for you guys, and you can hold it as a memorabilia. So this one is to Christian Gomes. It is basketball, that's right. We have a relaxed environment here, as you can see. This next proclamation is Miles Jackson. This next one is for Isaiah Anderson. God bless you. This one is, got thrown in the mix, manager Lauren Santos. You see here? All right, we're gonna put this right here, and I'll give it to the coach at the end. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. We signed these in a hurry coming in the meeting, so apologies if the coaches got in the middle. This is for Daniel Buragad. This one is for Christopher Carlos. See all these folks at Blacktop too, which is the East Providence League at Pearsfield. All these kids play in that also, just so the public knows. This goes to Owen Garganta. Did I get it right? This one is for Daniel Jordan. Boy, I wonder why you won it. I did see a couple of their games, because I was repping at a different court, but they are very good players, thanks to the coaches. Cash McGurn. This one is Lauren, uh, is it Jaden Maderas? Sorry. So some of this scroll, I can't read that, because is it Jaden Maderas? All right, not here. I'll leave it right here. All right, let's go with Ryan Miguel. I love it. I love that sport. That's my favorite sport. I just got off the baseball field. My grandson, who says he's not that good, but hi, buddy, if you're watching. This one's for Cameron Oldham. He's not here, because I coached, I coached Cameron. I coached Cameron. Great kid. Played for Sacred Heart for our first year instructional league. And we went 500, so he contributed very good. Coach Sean Jackson. Very good coach. Very respectful. That means a lot coming from a referee. Coach Donald McGurn. Notice we got the fifth kid, fifth grade kids early, right? Because they gotta go to bed earlier. I was told that, but you guys can stay up till at least nine, all right? I'm gonna say this one is, is it Lance Santos? Is that the first name? Oh, I can't really read. Jace? Jace?
Come on, referees can read better than that.
Look at that writing. Exactly. Too fancy for me. I should have did a rehearsal. Ismail Kurelops. Let's take a photo of these guys. I'll get up top with the council. All right, to the eighth grade girls, congratulations.
All right, girls, let's see what he does with your names now.
Listen, it's not easy. I should have the coach come up and read them.
No, no, we're enjoying this. This is fun.
All right. Thank you very much. Is it Tiana Ramos? Did I get it right? I got it right. Good job. All right, I got this one. Jocelyn Taylor. I wonder who won the scrimmage between the girls and the boys if they played. I think the boys would give you a run for your money. Marissa Salbento. I stopped being embarrassed after fifth grade. Jordan Pimental. All right. Olivia Gomes. Not here. This one's gonna be challenging. Miss Fonseca. Let's see. I don't like this writing at all. I know it, I know the last name.
Avery.
Avery Duwa.
Can I just point out Avery is my cousin's daughter, continuing the tradition.
Not Avery. See, he thought it was Avery. Avery. Thank you. So you're not a fan of the writing either. Thank you very much. So, okay, public, see, I'm not the only one. Ariawa Caraballo. Avery is Mr. Lawson's cousin. Did you hear that, everybody?
Continuing the tradition of Larina Women in Athletics.
Malani has.
Very proud of you.
Not here. Not. Did I get the name right? Manager Brenda Fonseca. Okay. Well, she got recognized either way. Coach Jason Taylor. Oh, I know this guy. He told me I needed glasses. No, no, he didn't. Very respectful. Coach Vincent Fonseca.
Before we leave, I would, I would just say to you, to you guys, that as you can see, we keep things usually light here, and we try to have some fun. We do argue later when it's later in the evening. But I hope that you all continue to represent East Providence as you have done so, so far. And tonight, as we sit here, as we came into the chambers, our East Providence High School girls' softball team was winning. The East Providence High School boys' baseball team, playing away in Warwick tonight, won the game, their first game. And we know that our special partners were playing a great game of basketball in the high school gym, and there was lacrosse going on. So keep that towny spirit with you guys in the years to come. And congratulations from all of us, including, the mayor has signed these proclamations. We're all very proud of you, and you do not have to stay here tonight till midnight. You're all free to go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone leave? The kids gone? Thank you for that, Councilman Fogarty. So let's resume the agenda for executive session. We can stay here. I don't think there's any, any litigation or need to go into executive session if solicitor wants to run through these claims.
So the first claim is a recommended approval on the amount of $115.99 for a pothole claim?
Any comments on this claim? Pretty standard.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the recommendation by Councilman Fogarty. Is there a second? Second by Vice President Rigo. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have that for zero. Next, next claim.
Second claim was a pothole claim on the amount of $1,346. As you know, under the statute, the maximum amount is $300. So the recommendation is to approve the claim in the amount of $300.
Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Approve the recommendation by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have. Next claim?
Next claim is a claim for sewer abatement in the amount of $984.60. Director of Public Works recommends approval of the claim.
Is there a motion on?
What was the reason for the claim?
Sewer backup.
One of our sewer lines backed up into their property?
It was a blockage. It was found to be in our, in our line, so yes.
And we fixed the problem?
Well, yes.
Okay. Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion to approve, Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. That concludes the claims. And I think as a special courtesy without objection, there is an item on the agenda. If you could identify the page and the number of the police vehicles, and I would invite.
Page seven, D1.
Thank you, sir. Page seven, I would invite our police chief, Chris Franciscone, who this may be your last hurrah, I guess, here in the, in the city. So this is, we don't give gold watches, but we'll let you come up earlier in the evening, so you don't have to stay here.
Very much.
All night. All seriousness, I know we all have appreciated what you have done for the community. Every time that I've had the occasion to speak with you or your command staff or almost anyone in the department, your professionalism was in full sight at all times. And being a law enforcement officer in America this day and age is very, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, very, very difficult. And keep our fingers crossed. I mean, East Providence has, I'm sure there's a couple blemishes here and there. That's life. But for the most part, we, we've been great. And you've been a big part of keeping that community relationship going. If anyone else has any other comments before we move on to the?
I just hope we've had a lot of retirements, and I hope the younger guys are ready to step up. They got some big shoes to fill. Big shoes, and I hope they're up for the task.
Yeah, my comment is quick. You're staying, right?
Unfortunately not, sir.
No, but congratulations and thanks for everything you've done for the City of East Providence.
Wish you nothing but the best, buddy.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to thank you since day one, having been in this seat. You've been nothing but an asset for myself and Ward One. You solved a lot of issues, traffic conditions up in Ward 1. Who is taking your, who will take your position? Does have big shoes to fill. And I know there's capable people in this department that can fill your shoes. And that's the nice thing about the City of East Providence Police Department. The only time that there was an outsider and you're on the force, it didn't work. It, it's a unique bond, having a son who's in law enforcement and they all talk and the East Providence guys have a special bond. And I just hope that that bond continues, you stay in the family. Thank you.
I appreciate the kind words and I would like to say that it's, you know, it's been a, it's been a privilege to, to work with each of you and the support you've shown for the police department, um, does not go unrecognized. And, um, we do have a, a, a very, very, very good group of police officers here. This community is very lucky to have those police officers who, um, really pride themselves on, um, making East Providence a safe community. They really do. And they go, um, above and beyond. And we, uh, consider ourselves a full-service police department. We don't just solve crime, we do tons of other things. Um, and, you know, I've, I had that inherited to me and I hope I, I left and instilled that further in the men and women of the police department. So thank you all very much, very much appreciated.
Thank you, Chief. Best of luck and, and health. I think Council VP, did you sponsor this and did you, is there anything to add or we, it's pretty, is? Read just the heading, not the whole thing, yes.
Yeah. Resolution authorizing the mayor to purchase two police vehicles for the police department, sponsored by Council Vice President Rego.
Motion to, motion to pass.
Second.
Motion by Council Vice President Rego, seconded by Councilman Lawson. And just for the public's clarification, the funding source, Chief?
This is Federal Asset Forfeiture Fund.
Asset forfeiture, okay.
And I just wanted to point out that, uh, a member of my command staff dug pretty deep and was able to find two brand-new 2023, um, models which saved us $10,000. So.
Awesome.
A very good, uh, find by him.
Good news. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, four to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Godspeed, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, go back to the regular order of the agenda.
Consent calendar for discussion and possible vote. A, council adjourners' regular meeting minutes, 3/18/2025. Number two, special meeting minutes, um, March 19th, 2025. Letters, new property address, 81 Pinecrest Drive, Riverside, 83 Pinecrest Drive, Riverside, 30 Peach Orchard Drive, Riverside, 24-26 Peach Orchard Drive, Riverside.
Is there a motion on a consent count?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, Councilman Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fogarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have that. Next item.
B, tax abatements, $38,533.64.
I know there is some, uh, questions some council have, uh, legitimate questions, but, uh, we also have our tax assessor, uh, present and I certainly would not want to preclude her from wanting to, uh, help us with some information. So I will allow her to, um, give an explanation of what, what this request is about.
Okay. Good evening. So I believe there's two on there, right? There might be three, but two are for the same account.
And just for the record, uh, you identify yourself and?
Sarah Brew, tax assessor.
Thank you.
So the one, um, one is for a motor vehicle. There should be two years for that. Um, that was someone who, their car was repossessed, they showed me proof, um, back in, when we used to tax motor vehicles, that was one of the things that they could provide us to have their motor vehicle bill abated. So they showed me the proof that warranted the abatement. And then the other one is a non-utilization tax? So is that the one that we wanna discuss?
Yes.
I, I got a question on process. The, we're voting to approve these abatements?
Yes.
One of them from 2021?
Yes.
That's the repossessed car?
Yes.
Okay, if we wanna go one at a time, I'll make a motion to approve that one.
Motion to approve the one as described for the motor vehicle, seconded by VP Rego. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
And the $56,000, 2022, that's the same motor vehicle? Okay.
Same person.
So?
It's a different year.
We're just gonna discuss now, last year, somebody's getting $38,000?
This was, this is not the regular tax bill for this property. This is the non-utilization tax bill. So per our city ordinance and also per state law, the cities and towns have a right to, um, impose a non-utilization tax. That is for properties that are vacant and abandoned. So how these get on the tax roll, which is a separate tax roll, it's not the original tax roll, is the building inspector goes out and he watches the property for a year. He deems it vacant and abandoned. He gives a list to the assessor's office and then we impose the tax. In order to, so what, with, we do research these the best we can, but every once in a while, you know, there's something that we don't notice. So they do have an opportunity after the tax is imposed to come before us and explain if they were marketing the property, if it was leased, if they were renting a portion of it that maybe the building inspector wasn't aware of. Any of those reasons can get the property abated.
So this is one property?
This is one property and this is, um.
Which property for 38 grand?
So this is 30, I believe it was 35 Water Street, Milo's property?
I think that is the, uh, Al's waterfront restaurant. Yes, the old color.
Warehouse across.
Yes, it's the warehouse.
Which has been empty for a decade.
So he, he has a listing, he's trying to sell all those properties, but we did not realize that that property was also included with the listing that he has.
It's separate.
But he's trying to market them.
Okay.
They're also separate.
Right, they are separate, but part of his listing is to?
So if the property's for sale, he can get his taxes abated?
It's not his original tax bill, it's his non-utilization tax.
Non-utilization tax.
So, non-utilization.
Non-utilization because he doesn't wanna lease it out to people and now he's asking for a $38,000 tax break from the ci, from the citizens?
And he's had buyers and purchased the sale.
I know.
And he's had people.
So I'm a know on this.
He's had people wanting to, wanting to rent it. And, and people, and you, you're doing your job, people just got their revals in the mail and you wanna take $38,000 off the levy? Cause that's basically what we're doing.
Well, this isn't on the levy, this is in addition.
We're taking $38,000 out of the funds and all we hear from the administration is things are tight and you're taking $38,000 right now out of the treasury, right? Cause we're not gonna collect it.
This wasn't part of the levy?
But it's still $38,000 that the city isn't gonna be able to collect, correct? We either collect it or we don't collect it, right? It's a, it's a simple answer. Either we collect or we don't collect, right?
Right.
$38,000.
Right, but it wasn't money that was?
No, but it's.
Let her, let her answer.
But it's still, let me finish. It's still.
She's gotta answer the question.
All right. I just.
And then you can come back. Can you clear it up a little more?
Okay. So when, when we have our normal tax roll, the 2024 tax roll, that is the money that's approved in the budget. So this was not part of that tax money. This is in addition to that. This is not something that we do every year. This, this was a one-time thing to try to clean up some vacant and abandoned properties. Part of the ordinance states that if the property is being marketed for sale, then we weren't supposed to tax it. That's, that's part of the ordinance and it's also a state law. So I'm just following the state law by abating it. They came in and they provided me the proof that I needed, you know?
It's been sales for a while.
And they could take it to court if I don't.
He did have buyers that wanted, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's been buyers.
So I make a motion to not approve.
All right, just.
Seconds.
Solicitor wants to, hold on.
Motion is a motion.
All right, but before the motion, Solicitor had his hand up, so.
Thank you. So I just wanna explain what the non-utilization tax is. First of all, the rate is $100 per thousand of value of property. That's why this prop, that tax bill is so high. A defense to the non-utilization tax is that the property is up for sale. The person is not required to sell it, but as long as they can prove that the property is listed, we cannot collect this tax. That's the law. I know you may not like it, but that is the law. So this money will never be collected. So that's, that's why, that's why the tax assessor has come to us and asked for the abatement and this is above and beyond.
We're not talking about Sarah. Uh, we're, we're, we're happy with Sarah's explanation and deal, but we're looking at somebody who's circumventing the responsibility. But I can have a piece of property, uh, for sale. Now you're telling me I can, if I didn't sell a property that I inherited, I could keep it on for sale for as long as I want?
Yeah, as long as it?
And, and I have it for sale and there's a lot of them up in my ward. And for sale, and we know which one, I'm not gonna mention the name, but we know which property that is, so it's for sale, for sale. I don't have to pay taxes.
It's gonna be non-utilization, it's a definition of non-utilization, number one. The property you're talking about is being utilized, number one.
That one, but there's, but there's other ones.
And number two?
Non-utilization, right? So I can have this decrepit building just sit there or, you know, and I got a for-sale sign on it and I don't have to pay taxes.
As long as it's active, this is what the statute says.
Actively for sale.
And that, and that, that conforms to state law. That's what the law is.
Yeah.
That's why we're, I, we'll, we'll never collect this because they have shown to the satisfaction of the tax assessor that the property has been actively marketed. So this money will never be collected. And only by taking off the tax roll, she's just cleaning it up.
No.
That's all it is.
And it's, it's wrong. It, it's, it's wrong.
We're never gonna collect, so I made a motion to not give them an abatement.
I mean, it's gonna, it's, we're not gonna collect, yeah.
So the motion was made, was there a second?
I second.
So on discussion on the motion, so I, I would ask us, I think none of us here are happy with this property. We, we all know it's, that there have been potential buyers. They've, I can't even get into some of what, what we all know about it. The sale could have happened and it, it hasn't. However, how do we square if the law is telling us we?
Well, it's, it's academic, we're not gonna co, we're not gonna collect it, so, I mean.
That's why you abate it. It's never gonna be collected, that's why it needs to be abated so the tax assessor can clear her rolls. This is an administrative action.
So, all right, so I get that, so.
We're leaving it on the roll.
If that's the case, we, we could technically take it as, you know, it's abandoned, it's decrepit, we could take it at eminent domain.
Issue and we can't take it by?
No, no, but not right, but we could in theory, right? I'm saying theory.
The city only has the power to take the property by eminent domain for, for a park or conservation purpose.
We could turn it into a park.
I guess, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just trying to say.
I'm just saying, this is.
All, all I'm saying is that, that there's, there's, this is, this is quote-unquote an extra tax.
Aye.
That it's being imposed, it's not part of the regular roll. It's the ass, the tax assessor has validly come before you, she checked it, the tax was imposed.
This is.
The property owner gave, gave us evidence that it did not meet the criteria for the imposition of this tax and therefore it's being requested to be abated, that's all.
This has nothing to do with Sarah.
This is in addition to his regular tax, too.
I'm not suggesting that you know that she is following the law.
Oh, yeah, we're not, this has nothing to do with Sarah. This is, she does a great, she's a great job, we're lucky we have her.
You're up for it.
But you know what? It's, it's somebody circumventing the law when there's small business people in this city that go out and do the right thing, day in and day out for their property and they're paying their taxes and somebody isn't. That's wrong.
But our.
But no, I'm just saying, it's wrong. I mean, there's no, there's, it's wrong and the subject.
But our action won't fix that.
I know, but it's just, it's just wrong and it's terrible that people take advantage of situation and there's, and then we don't, honest, hard-working people ask, you know, have issues with their water bill and they get denied and we got $38,000 going away. That's my, that's my thing. It has nothing to do with Sarah or it's the process, it just stinks.
Okay, so my last comment is this is not $38,000 going away, right? We don't have it.
No. This money was, this is not part of the regular tax.
It's not part of the rolls, it's nowhere.
He does get a tax bill for his real estate at this location already. This is in addition to that, just so you understand. So he, this is in addition to his regular tax bill.
So legally, logistically?
This isn't counted in our budget when we did the budget.
Right. So Mr. Solicitor, if, if this council, uh, does not approve the abatement, what is, what happens? What's the next?
It remains on her books and eventually.
Will they get past two notices?
They'll get, they'll may get past two notices, but again, the, the defense is going to be that they, they, they're not, the tax is not eligible because they have proven that it's been actively listed. That is the exception in the law, that is the exception in our ordinance. So what the assessor is asking you to do is to abate a property that does not comply, that does comply with all the ordinances that you have passed, that this council has passed on them.
By not taking that recommendation, are we putting the city at harm?
No, but you're not really doing anything, it's just better for, to, to let her clean up her books, that's, that's what it is.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, um, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Be clear, we're voting to deny the abatement.
That's the motion, yeah.
That's your motion is to deny this abatement.
Councilman Fogarty?
Nay.
Councilman Lawson?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rego?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza? Council President Rodrick?
And I, I vote nay. I, I think four of us are not happy with the, the property and the situation, but I'm not going to go against letting our tax assessor clean up her books. We're not giving anybody any money, we're not taking money out of the city coffers, we're not putting money in this person's pocket. That's another issue. I'm all for a, I don't know if it was a resolution, but a, a motion that some of us made a couple of years ago to create an agency in the city to go after property, go after properties like this. And that's where we fixed this kind of a problem. The council at the time thought there were other motivations behind it and there really wasn't. This came from a couple of us on the council and a former, uh, acting, uh, former assistant solicitor. That would have fixed problems like this. This is not the solution we're looking for. So with that, it's motion fails two to two.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. And I appreciate your opinions, uh, everybody here, thank you. Okay, next item?
Make a motion to bundle the licenses?
Motion by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Fogarty to bundle the licenses. How many, uh, do we have?
Thirteen total.
Thirteen, is it?
Yep.
B1 through 13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Motion to approve?
I do have one amended. Actually, the May 17th. It was a one-day event.
That, that's not part of the?
No, it was.
Was that the Sacred Heart?
July 5th, 2025?
What was the amendment, what was the amendment? The date or the time?
It was supposed to be 2026, not 2025. Was it?
Oh, it's the first one, it's the first.
Oh.
5/17, yeah.
Yes, 5/17, the road race. Sorry. Yes, it was supposed to be 2026 that they were putting, they already had, did 2025 and so now they're doing it for 2026.
It's standard, so I'm.
Yeah.
With the amendment, I vote that we approve. Just change in 25 to 2026.
Right, with that.
With that one date.
That one date changed. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fogarty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have that. Thank you. Next item?
Public hearing? None. Communication, William Lewis Sewer Fee?
Good evening.
Evening.
Just name an address for the record.
William Lewis, uh, 112 Prescott Ave. Riverside. How'd we make out? Did we do anything on my sewer fee? We were gonna take it under advisement two years ago? Before that, four years ago?
I, I have no information. I know you had requested some information.
No, I, I had requested.
But someone, someone was here and that you weren't able to make that meeting. But someone, someone was here and that you weren't able to make that meeting the next time. I haven't heard anything since then. I don't know if administration has any information.
Oh, I, what I requested is that if we can put a deduct meter on an inside portion.
Right. And I think superintendent of the water division, I think said that, no, we could not.
No, he didn't. He said you, the city council would have to change it because right now it's only allowed for outside. That's what was said.
He didn't say that. He never communicated that to us. So if Mr. Marvel wants to come here and make that cause, I'd have no problem. I agree with you. I mean, again, I'm pro business.
Did they send the legal department in ordinance or request?
You do things the right way. So, I mean, and I have, and again, I have a relationship with you. I'm going to state it for the record so if somebody doesn't say that I treat somebody different than you.
Oh, they'll say it anyway.
They'll say it anyways, but I'm going to be upfront and transparent that we're friends and I run events at your place. And, but Jim's never said that to us. So if that's the case and he said that to you, then Mr. President, I want Jim to be at this, at the next meeting so that he can.
That's what was said that night. You guys would take it under advisement if we could put a deduct meter for the inside use. Cause right now with the city council, I mean, with the prior councils, they had only allowed it for outside use. So that has to be done by you. And that's what he had said.
My recollection was that there was, after the last time he was here, I think it was Mr. Borges or Mr. Marvel came, came by and indicated to you why that was not possible. And I don't remember the specifics, but I think there was.
Yeah, I, I remember there was some discussion about that. That wouldn't answer your concerns and wasn't part of the discussion that the water usage was still going into the sewer system. So there's, that's.
No, I have proved that it's not. I can prove that.
But where does it go? When you pour it down the sink, that was a question I remember I asked that.
It goes in your mouth and out my door. That's where it goes.
But we talked about when water is left behind on tables and there's water usage, right? That isn't always being drunk, drink, drink, what's the word?
Twenty-eight percent of it is.
Right, but I, I'm not the water department, so I can just tell you what they told us that night and I, I haven't heard any more from them. Do you have anything to add, Director? I mean, Chief?
Correct. I have been in, in touch with Superintendent Marvel and he's informed me that, that what the solicitor said is correct, that he wasn't making any suggestion to add an outdoor deduct.
So if I recall, we said a flat sewer rate would help alleviate this issue, correct?
I, it, I mean, it would, but I think in turn the city would end up losing money.
In what way?
Because a flat sewer rate, I believe not, it wouldn't work across the board because right now I've had a lot of people approach me in the industry and not every restaurant gives as much water as others. So I believe a flat sewer rate would probably hurt the city.
I think, I think the testimony before Mr. Borges was that the flat sewer rate would cost the residents more. So.
It would protect those who were paying less than their fair share.
Correct.
Unfortunately, we have to go with the recommendations of the professionals and they're telling us, we just heard, they do not recommend indoor deduct meters.
Okay, so I have to take this to the state level? Is that what, where we're going?
I will say you are the only person that's come before us asking for an.
Yes, that's.
It was presented to our professionals who run the water department and their recommendation to us was to not put them in.
Okay, that's.
And based on that recommendation is why you haven't heard any activity from us.
Okay. I appreciate you guys for your input.
We can ask Mr. Marvel to revisit and give us.
Nope.
Report in writing so we're, you know, refresh our memories, but that's, that was the last word that I recall.
I didn't hear him say that. I mean, I, we all agreed that it was illegal to do. That's what we all came across and we agreed on that.
Yep.
So.
Can, uh, Bill, can you ask the Hospitality Association?
Well, that's where I've.
No.
I've stopped, I've.
Can you ask the Hospitality?
He wanted to come down here and I said, I'll take care of it.
Can you ask the Hospitality Association what happens in other cities?
Yeah, where other cities don't charge the sewer fees that East Providence charges.
Can we get something on, can we get something from the Hospitality showing each city in town?
Yeah.
All right.
We can do that.
And, and our fees are higher because we borrowed 50 million to.
I know that had, you guys had nothing to do with that one.
Yeah.
I know the history of it.
But I'm here to work for the, for people like you, you who invest back in the community and, and not trying to circumvent this.
No, I don't want to see the city not get the money.
Exactly. So if you can help us, we'll try to help you the best we can.
That's exactly what I'll do then.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you.
Yes, you have an update?
I do, which you may be happier with this answer. So no, you were, you were incorrect, sir, by saying that the council has to approve you going to get an outdoor deduct.
No, no, no. Indoor.
Indoor. So that's not the case, from what I understand from Superintendent Marvel, Marvel, you can apply through the water department. You would have to pay for a plumber and you would have to do, like handle the process. So if you contact the water department, contact Mr. Marvel, I'm told that you can apply through, all of those applications and actions are approved by the water department and not coming before the council.
I think you, did you ask Mr. Marvel about an outdoor deduct meter?
Both. I just pulled aside and gave him a call about it.
Outdoor and indoor?
No, I don't think you can do the indoor.
Exactly.
And he had say to that, but outdoor, yeah.
And it's, indoor is the issue.
Right.
Yeah. So the procedure that you're giving us is for outdoor. His question is about an indoor.
I'll get a more definitive answer.
Yeah.
But I think the procedure is outdoor. People do get outdoor deduct.
And, and because it's been a couple of years, Bill, you, you talk to whoever you have to also, but I will, we will get an up-to-date answer, even if he just has to revisit it. And we'll get that in writing and get it, get it to you. You won't have to come back here. You can come back here anytime you want, but we'll, we'll deliver the answer in writing to you. And then we'll go from there. And I will further tell you that we'll do this, can we do this within a month here ASAP? All right, he will, he will talk to them tomorrow and we'll, we'll get this expedited. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Next item? On the list?
Public comment? None. Appointment? None. Council members? Number one, role of the city council in regards to resolutions passed on March 19th, 25. Council Vice President Rigo?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President. I had some people approach me. I love going to Stop and Shop because that's where I get all my constituent services request and issues going on. So on the 19th, and the president here did the right thing. The, the resolution didn't come down to us in time to make the agenda on the 18th. And we followed the, as soon as the, as soon as the resolution was there, authorizing the mayor to purchase the $800,000 or so contract for the steel for the new recreation center that the city is long overdue for like 25 years. We did the right thing. We posted the meeting for the next day. We even went above and beyond. We had the technician here and everybody saw. We could have done, and people approached me, you guys are doing a back, backdoor deal. Backdoor deal. We approved on the 5th of December, 2023, a recreation center. So there's going to be a lot of votes on this. We did, we did everything transparent and to accuse the five of us and the mayor to being on the take is absurd. So I just want to clarify, and the president took, president took some heat for this and we took it that he's in the pocket. We did what we were supposed to do. We went beyond, we could have had a meeting the next morning at nine o'clock that other councils had had, not had it on tele, not had it on, you know, access on YouTube. We did everything right. We are as transparent and, you know, they're all my, we'll have disagreements from time to time, which we do, but we're, we're a close knit family. We're going to agree to disagree, but to accuse us of being on the take, and I see it and people, and people show me his stuff on, I don't read social, I don't read, there's a couple of websites out there. I don't read it, but people send it to me. To accuse us of being on the take for a building that's long overdue in the city and we're trying to get out in front of the craziness that's going on in this country right now? We did the right thing and I just wanted to come to your defense because you didn't need to take that, you didn't need to take the hits.
I, I, I think you, you said it all. This, this is a simple, simple matter. Any contract over $50,000 has to be approved by the city council. These were votes that have already been approved to build this building. We, the contractors came to us or the, the architects, the, the people involved and said they're concerned about the federal tariff issue. They said, we really need to get this going and if we don't get it going right away, the whole project could be in jeopardy. So the meeting was advertised like it always is, 48 hours notice, meeting was televised, we're in and out in five minutes. And the only mistake we, we made is you went to Stop and Shop. See, I go to Shores. And Shores is Red Island based. I think Stop and Shop is Mass based, so I, I get fewer complaints, I think sometimes. We have to go to McShorty's. But seriously, this was all a lot to do about nothing and there'll be plenty more votes like this and if, and, and I'll take responsibility. I, I was supposed to tell the clerk, put it on the agenda, didn't get on the agenda, so we put it 48 hours later and it, it got done. So as far as I'm concerned, case.
I haven't heard from one person complaining. I don't know where you guys are getting these. If it's social media, get rid of.
I, I, I didn't hear.
Get rid of the miserable people that just want to complain.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. VP. Next item.
Water for initiative updates, Councilman Lawson?
Okay, I have the answer to some and some I don't. We got a lot of good things happening in Riverside and I am going to stay focused, making sure they get done timely. So Willapon Gazebo, it's been a few years. Willapon should be paved by early summer. We provided DEM with additional info. They've been not good with us. It's been years waiting for DEM. So we're waiting for them for permission on the gazebo? I know we're doing the, the previous parking lot, so the stormwater doesn't run in, in the gazebo. We've been talking about this and we've been waiting for DEM.
The only information that I have is what I provided, Councilman, which is that the parking lot would be paved by early summer. We're waiting on DEM based on the additional information that they requested. So I believe Director Borges will follow up with them to see if there's anything else that they need or if the information provided was, was enough.
Okay, thank you. Field behind RMS, still not done, needs minor low spot filling, which the contractor will do. The city's going to fertilize and the maintenance. So now we're not getting the field till the fall? Am I reading this correctly? And the city's doing work that the, where, did we pay this contractor for the work the city's going to be doing?
No, this is, the city wouldn't be, wouldn't be doing the work that we paid a contractor to do, Councilman. So we're waiting for the grass to grow and this is a normal process.
Four years process? I, I, I know I sound like a jerk on this, but this is what I hear from constituents. It takes four years to build a grass field?
Well, there was.
I'm just representing.
Woods there and we had to do a lot to the land, that we had to put up posts. There was issues with the soil that we weren't predicting. So with any project, you don't know what you're going to get into until you start.
Okay, so the contractor's still on site and you guys are anticipating the fall?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip to kayak launch. The question I received, Patricia, is why wasn't it pulled for the winter? And I, I know it needs to be fixed. Structural wells, do we have a rough timeframe? Cause the warm weather, we're about a month out from, you know, people wanting to be out on the water?
Again, Councilman, we just answered the, the question based on what we received, which again, our answer is that the kayak launch was removed. The, the question was why was it removed? So it was removed for repairs. Again, there was a few structural wells that were broken and that need to be repaired by the city welder. We're also reinforcing the structure further in order to avoid damage. As far as the timeline, I can get further information on that and report back.
And the reason we left it in for the winter was?
I don't have that answer.
Okay.
Find out, but that's an additional question I can find.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. Splash pad, you guys ordered the equipment, it's due to be installed this year. Installed in time for the summer or?
So this year would probably be this season, this summer, but again, I can double check.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. Vintnerav, the question I received from that is are they putting any equipment other than, because it looks like just like toddler stuff? Is there like more stuff that's more geared to like the pre-teen teens? Or is the equipment in place what we're getting?
Just today, I, we were there and we saw families already, even though the area was cordoned off, they were already utilizing it. We saw teenagers playing ball there, so they're utilizing it. As far as additional adult or teenage equipment, I don't know. I'll go back and look at plans.
Okay. And Saban Point, when do you plan on starting that?
I didn't have that as, I think that was on our list. I don't believe that that was on our list. So what was the question about Saban Point?
The questions I provided was playground updates at Vintnerav and Saban Point.
Let's see, we have the information about the kayak, but I don't have anything on.
Okay. Concession building, I go by the Big Al complex every day. I do see that's coming along. So the city's building that? Foundation and the structure?
Again, Councilman, I, I only provided the answers to the questions that were provided. If you have follow-up questions, I'm happy to get all those answers and report that back.
So you don't know who's building it?
I will double check.
Okay.
Our DPW director's on vacation this week, so I can't ask him in follow-up with an answer here during the council meeting.
Okay, so my last three things all have to do with Crescent Park. We'll start with last meeting, I requested, see if we can move forward with the event tent, with the pad and the tent.
So we did meet, as you know, the bids, as you reported out during the last council meeting, the, the bids did come in much higher than expected. We were talking with the lowest bidder in regards to valued engineering, but we, at this point, need to go back to the drawing board. We did meet and, but at this time, what we've been told by our own engineers is that you don't want to divide this project and split it in order to, to get the work done.
Why is that?
I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I'm happy to have Eric come and explain it, or the.
I'll, I'll keep this on the docket until we move forward.
That's fine.
Um, and then the train, have we looked at storage solution?
I don't have an answer.
And to purchase the train now, so the kids can enjoy the summer?
I don't have an answer on the train. I'm a little confused because the requests that are received via email didn't have anything about the train, so.
So this is what I put on docket, purchase train and storage.
Right, this is what you put on the docket, Councilman, but what you provided to me in an email request with a, a list of questions that you wanted updates on, all of those who have received, I don't believe the Crescent Park was on that, or the train.
Right, but on the agenda too, I have the train.
This is under your discussion, sir. This is your council discussion.
Yeah. Requesting, okay, fine. So I'll put this on the docket for next time, I'll be more clear that I'm looking for more specific.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll make sure I forward it also to the, the director.
I, I do receive a council present, I appreciate it, Andy sends it in the council, Councilman.
I, I just want to add.
These on the docket.
I just receive a slew of them, and, and I do my best to get your answers.
When, when you, when you meet with the mayor and other department heads, and I, I, I think on the council, there is a, and we know we're not doing the day-to-day job there, but just an opinion we have that because we came in at, and I've mentioned this to the mayor, so it's not a, a secret, but because the bids came in so high, we will be very satisfied with a, a smaller project for that concession stand. You know, we're, we're looking to keep it basic and simple. Hamburgers, hot dogs, chowder.
And I believe that's the, the case, Council President, is we've been meeting with the construction, with, we met with the, the lowest bidder, and we met with our engineer, we've met with the carousel coordinator, things are expensive.
They're expensive, and they're going to get worse, and I.
And we're, we're really thinking outside of the box on how we can handle some of this work in-house. I mean, we're, I sit in on these meetings, I, I see the brainstorming, and how can we make this happen? We don't want to leave that money on the table either.
Right, and I know, as the mayor has said, we've already spent some money in planning and drawers, drawings, et cetera.
Correct, with the architect.
Comes a time when we cut, cut the level of losses and say, okay, let's take those plans and let's just get it down.
And we're doing exactly that.
And I know you're doing that, because I've sat in on some of those meetings, but there is an appetite here, no pun intended, to go smaller and basic than, than what, what we originally wanted.
Right, and I believe that where, there are certain things with, I'm going to say historical commission, but I don't have the exact word, I don't know if it's the preservation of the, the commission, but we do have to do things, like there are certain things we cannot do, or that we have to do, excuse me, based on the facade and stuff, so.
So I've asked for what role the historical folks have in dictating to us what we can do to our property. I haven't received that answer yet.
So there are, there are two things that I, and I can go back and, and follow up with a, with an email with you, to you, Councilman, and the rest of the council, but there are very specific things that have to remain.
Cordon to who?
I want to say it was the historic, I don't know if it's the preservation of the commission, but it was one of those.
And I just want to know what authority they have to be telling us this.
That I cannot answer because it's, it's not within my realm of being legal.
No, that's all right, but that's the reason why I asked.
I understand.
There's, there's a structure there right now, so if we continue onto that structure, which is concrete cinder blocks. No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, so it, it's already there, so from a historical, from a historical standpoint, if you go back, in theory, it's already been, cinder blocks weren't around when the, well, they were, but cinder.
The Romans invented them, so you should know that, Councilman Rego.
I know that, that's why I stopped myself real quick, but that building.
Hundreds of years.
That building was already, that building was added, that building was added already, so, so there, you know, we've already, we've already changed the footprint of that.
I will get the Councilman's answer about that, that's, I completely take the blame for that, that was my fault.
I just, I, I just remember going back to March of 2023, and the former chief of staff said that Memorial Day of 2024, we'd be eating clam cakes and chowder, and it's going to be Memorial Day 2025. Well, we can get clam cakes and chowder.
I was going to say, I had some this past summer, I had a great.
But out of a new building, so I, I, you know, point, point the bottom.
All right, we're going to move on, and solicitor will get that information. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Patricia.
You have another, no, I'm sorry, you, you wanted to say something, yeah.
I just want to thank the vacation boy, his department, or the, the fencing company's doing a great job up at Kimberly Ann Rock with the new backstops, it looks like a whole new complex, so I just, I, I know the participants in Rumford literally are going to be very happy with basically four new fields, or four new backstops, I should.
Riverside, are you, are you listening to this?
And let me be clear, the reason I'm pushing for the tent at a minimum is, I was at the Carousel Commission meeting last week, and they're talking, having to spend a lot of money to put a tent up for the food and wine event and stuff. They raise money to preserve the carousel, and when you're trying to raise funds, you don't want to spend funds. So we have the money to build this event tent. We have the plan. We, we can, I'll wait to hear from Eric respectfully, but.
You don't want to divide.
At a minimum, I think we can get this part of the project going, so that way those folks can utilize it for fundraising events, we can rent it out to raise funds to help restore the carousel. As we know, it's a hundred-year-old plus structure, it takes money to renovate and stuff, so the more we can let the Carousel Commission do their job without having to expend their funds, the better it is for Crescent Park.
I understand.
So that, that's my motive.
I, I just think from the meetings that I've sat in on, and again, I'm not a construction engineer, but from what I understand, dividing the project and doing that doesn't make sense from a construction point of view, because of the work that needs to be done on the land, on the property, below, the drainage, there's a lot of structural kind of issues, or construction issues that need to be addressed, and they, that was something that.
And I always say, we got a robot robot around on Mars, figure out little problems like this. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And next.
City Council Veterans Committee updates, Councilman Lawson?
All right, I got a few updates. We are going to have a benefits event with DAV, the Rhode Island Veterans Affairs. They're going to come senior center Thursday, April 24th, from nine to 2:00 PM, and they're going to be on hand with their computers to assist veterans getting into the system, filing benefit claims. If you ever dealt with any government agency, it's, it's kind of tough, so they're going to be on hand. I will be there myself. It's not like an event per se where there's like a speaking engagement, whatever, it's a drop-in type of event. You all are more than welcome if you want to come by. I don't know how well attended it will be, but we are going to be doing that, and I may add our next me nest if we can buy like a box of gel with some funds. I got, we're getting a digital flyer that should be done soon, so I'll be posting that, and that is April 24th. May 31st, the Elks are holding their expo at the Pierce Stadium again. That will be multiple different organizations that set up a booth, Veterans Comm, and Director Yon usually sets up there, all the various organizations, so that's going to be May 31st. We're going to be assisting the Elks as much as we can. And I think that is my last update. We are looking to, I'm just trying to finalize the date, Old Orchard Manor, they have some veterans that if they don't have staff, they can't get out, so we want to bring an event to them. So we're talking about like a Saturday coffee, that we'll go there, we'll bring the coffee, we'll have some games, we'll interact. I'm just waiting to hear back from Old Orchard if we can invite veterans that are not residents, and they're just double checking that. So as soon as we clear that, I'll have a date, I'll let you all know, and that will be a, just a social event, you know, mainly for the veterans we have at Old Orchard. And if we want to segue into my resolution, which is veteran-related, we can knock that off with, with your permission, if everybody don't mind.
Without objection, we can do that.
All right, so this resolution is just to say, we have.
Where are you on the?
Eight, seven, seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Okay, we got it. Let, let the clerk read the heading, and then.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's all right, just, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Resolution requesting the General Assembly allocate funding to cities and towns for placement of veterans into an extended stay facility, and to provide more funding for the Rhode Island Veterans Home in Bristol, sponsored by Councilman Lawson.
Councilman.
All right, so this resolution is to bring to the General Assembly why they're doing their budget. Veterans that are on the street, we have crossroads, which is a veteran with PTSD, it's usually not the best environment, you know, loud noises, stuff like that. The Elks, they do a great job when we identify a veteran on the streets, they get them off the streets, and they've been utilizing like the extended stay down in Warren Ave. But that costs money, it costs money. So what this resolution is asking is, the state allocate some funds that municipalities can use. So I did some basic math, sorry about that. Extended stays, $95 a night. If you multiply that by 365, it's like little less than $36,000. And that's just for one room, and you may not need the room every night. But if we can get the General Assembly to maybe allocate some funds that municipalities can use to get a veteran off the street, and maybe into these extended stays, until we can get them into the services they need. If you took the $36,000 and multiplied it by 38 communities, it's like 1.3 million, we don't need that much. So to me, a budget's a set of priorities. In Rhode Island, we have a $14 billion budget. I think this request, we're not asking for a ton of money, and again, it's like a new thing that we're presenting. So I'm bringing it to the council to see if there's consensus that, you know, we agree that this may be worthy, and if it passes, we'll bring it up to the General Assembly, and then maybe other communities as well. And I also added, fund it for the Veterans Home, just to ensure, right now, they're not fully staffed because, I mean, they're not fully filled, the residents, because staffing levels, they are doing a lot of work to try to get staffed, so I just added that in the resolution to ensure that there's enough money in the budget to be able to do that. So that's my request of my fellow council members, and I'll open it to discussion.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by Vice President Rego, if there's no discussion, any aye in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, that's a good idea.
Andy, I'll reach out to you about sending it to other communities, and I'll probably write up an email for our elected officials. Thank you guys so much.
We'll, we'll finish the council members, and then we will move the tax presentation, tax assessors here for their presentation to us, which you probably should have done a little bit earlier in the night, but Madam Clerk, if you want to read the last item under council members?
Request to fix, fix broken curbing.
Oh, there's two items, I'm sorry.
The landfill, Councilman Lawson?
Yeah, this is, you know, if we're going to ask people to do their job and send minimum house, and we got to do ours, and if you go by four steps, the landfill from the transformer to the first house by the entrance, there is some really busted up curbing, and Patricia did respond that they will look into it, but it, it's, it's pretty noticeable when you're coming down that it's all busted up, so.
All right, we'll follow up on that, and then I'll just take the last item, and then we'll move on. That this Thursday, April 3rd, weather permitting, but it doesn't look too bad, I think there might be some showers earlier, but there'll be dedication at East Providence High School. This, this council, with council support, we had requested, when we heard that McCoy Stadium, Pawtucket, was going to be demolished, and I think four of us were at a baseball game in, at the high school, and we said, you know, what a good idea if we could purchase some of those seats and put them behind the high school. So I did send a letter to the mayor of Pawtucket, and to some other officials in Pawtucket, some of our state reps who cover Pawtucket and East Providence, and we were hoping for donation, but we, I thought I'd be cordial, and we, we asked to purchase. So long story short, the city of Pawtucket gave our high school, gave us a donation of two or three rows of original McCoy Stadium seats, so for a historical value, as well as some seating for the fans at the games, it's, it would be a nice thing. We worked with a lot of people, the mayor de Silva said, if you can get those seats from Pawtucket, I'll make sure they get installed. And they did, we've had the various, was it Pox Department and other, other workers, and they've already got a row in, there are a couple more rows coming, but we're, we're going to have, this is the opening day of the high school baseball team, and we'll have the players there to cut a ribbon and make it a nice thing, it's a very historical nicety to have behind the high school. So if anyone can make it this Thursday, four o'clock sharp, the game starts at 4:30, and as referees will tell you, Councilman Fogarty, the, the game has to go on, so.
What are your umpire chairman?
Yeah.
I would like to add something to that.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick second. You know, we, we don't, we don't notice enough the workmanship of our in-house people. The brackets were fabricated in-house by the people of our city, and they are fantastically built, secure, I just want to compliment the public works.
Yep, that's, that's absolutely the truth. Council Vice President?
First, I'd like to thank your efforts, and the efforts of Mayor Grabian Pawtucket, and then obviously Mayor De Silva here by having the DPW getting, getting involved and doing that. It's a very nostalgic area, and there's a lot of ties between East Providence and McCoy Stadium. There's a lot of us who played there and won games there, and East Providence High School football team won a, won a couple of state championships on that field, so to bring them there, and it, it's, it's a good, it's a good tie-in. It isn't just McCoy Stadium, there's a lot of history from this city tied into that great ballpark, and there's a lot of us who live in East Providence now that played for that other school up in, on Walcott Street in Pawtucket, and it's great, and I thank you for that, because it brings back good memories for me, and, and we're lucky that we'll have the dedication Wednesday. You look at the weather forecasts and the Upper Peninsula, Thursday, excuse me, the Upper Peninsula of Michigan is getting bombarded with snowstorms, so we're lucky right here, but I want to thank you for adding the nostalgia, people like Jeff Hopkins and who played football, who was, you know, in front of us and everything, and it's, it's a great tie-in.
It should be fun, and the team's off to a start, they won their first game tonight out in Warwick, so hope to see a lot of people there Thursday.
My two cents.
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you for your vision and leadership. I, let's be honest, we were having trouble getting up off of that steep. There, there, there's some reasons, but your idea, I was there with you, and then you pushed it forward. I want to also add that the compost toilets are coming.
Yep.
So I was just at the high school for some sport, sporting events, it, it's a beautiful complex, and your idea to add those seats is just such an added value to an already amazing field, and it's going to be great. Hopefully the weather holds out Thursday, and it'll be a great thing, so thank you.
Thank, thank you all, and we can do it at the end. Yeah. Thank you. So now we, we do have on the agenda a presentation, as you know, the tax assessments and valuations have been completed, at least one phase, and the tax assessor and staff are here, so if you want to address the council, thank you.
Good evening, again, Sarah Frew, tax assessor. So as everyone's aware by now, the notices are out, everyone's receiving their new assessments. You haven't heard? So I have a representative with me tonight, Rich Nagel, he's part of Catalyst Northeast Revaluation, he's going to give a demo of his findings for the process that just went on, but I thought I would come up first and just give you a little bit of why we do these. Sometimes I feel like a broken record, because I know we've been here before, but this is the state law, so we have to do this by state law. There is a schedule set out there for each city and town to conduct revaluations, so this was our full reevaluation. So you have to do a statistical update every three years, and then on the ninth year, you do a full revale, which is what we just conducted. Both processes are also set by state law, where you have to assess the properties at their full and fair cash value, which is also market value. So that's what we do over the course of the year, as we're working on the project, we're collecting data, we're analyzing data, we're looking at sales, and then we build models, and there's a lot that goes into it to set what we feel are fair values across the board. So with that said, and another thing that's always important to keep in mind when we have these processes, is don't use the current tax rate, we're going to adjust the tax rate. If values go up, the tax rate comes down. If values, there have been markets where the. If values, there have been markets where the value goes down, we're just going to raise the tax rate. So we, you know, okay.
Before, maybe Rich could answer this. Was Rich the first name?
Yes.
Yes. Maybe you could answer this before you start. And if you want to identify yourself and company name for the record.
Rich Nagel from Catalyst Tax and Camo.
And my, my question is, and I, I haven't heard a lot from, from people. We see comments, social media, no one likes to see this when they open the mail and they say what. But the one complaint or concern that I've heard from a few people, and I wondered myself, I thought that it was almost mandatory that the company would request to come in the homes for, for this, this one. And a lot of people, including on my street, I didn't see anyone. A few people that called me and said, why didn't they come into my house? I want them to see that it's whatever. So is there a requirement? Obviously there isn't because you weren't, and maybe physically that's hard to do. But what's your answer to that?
Okay, so the answer is that there are two conditions that govern our data inspection of the properties. The first one is what is actually in the RFP created by the city. State of Rhode Island, actually, in statute forty-four dash five dot eleven suggests that you do an interior inspection every nine years. So in the RFP, our requirement was to knock on every door. And we send inspectors out there. To let them know that we were there, we left a little sticky note. And we asked them to call us back. And if they wanted an interior inspection, they could call us back and we would schedule that. Believe it or not, there's only about a five percent return on those calls. So every revale, we hear about, well, I didn't see anybody or nobody knocked on my door. But many times we can find that we've got the date and time we were on the street, for instance, and so forth. And it just, you know, they just weren't home or whatever. But I want to just follow that up with the sense that there are times where when a person or property owner is concerned about that, they can talk to the tax assessor. And our firm will always go out and inspect that property.
So are we beyond that point now? A senior citizen whom I know to be fairly, you know, reliable person and talked to me, said, you know, she's always home, didn't see anyone. And that can happen, I get it. But she said she called company and requested it. And they told her, no, you know, we're not coming out or we can't come out or we're done, the process is done. So is it too late? Can, can I get back to her and tell her to?
It's definitely not too late. I think that there may have been a better explanation there about waiting for the hearing process if we've already gone and completed that neighborhood. And what I'm explaining here is that, in fact, later on in the presentation, I will briefly get into the informal hearing process. Anybody at this point that has got their letter and thinks that, you know what, I wish they had come in, give us a call, go through the informal hearing process. Sometimes they don't have to actually show up or come to Town Hall because we have many citizens that really just need to be able to do it by phone or something, particularly in the case of an elderly person. So.
Okay.
But they can request an interior inspection and there's still time to do that, no problem.
Okay, I'll, I'll give her a call tomorrow, let her know that.
If I could just add some context before the presentation for the viewers, some perspective.
Yes.
So I got my house up here. Twenty twenty-one, I was evalued at two hundred and forty-two thousand. Today I'm at four fifty-two. However, I've only had my taxes increased three hundred and ninety-five dollars in that four-year span, less than a hundred. So I think it's important that people realize in twenty twenty-three, our tax rate was like twenty-one change. And then last year it dropped down to fourteen change per thousand. So these high assessments doesn't mean you're getting slammed with taxes. You know, it is a process, state law. They have gone up very, in my case, two hundred and ten thousand with no renovations or additions. But I, I think we got to do a good job as a city communicating to residents that, yes, it's an initial shock, but you got to compare your tax bill from last year to the one you're going to receive in June to really understand how much more you're paying in taxes. So I just wanted to add that, you know, we need to do a better job letting people know that. So I just wanted to add that before your presentation, you know, because I think people are not hearing that part.
Okay. So the presentation isn't too long. We're going to touch base in this presentation on where your values are today. And we'll talk a little bit about some sales data as to how those values came about. I do want to touch base a little bit on, just briefly on the process and why it's important. A lot of times there's lots of questions on why it's important. And I'll also just touch base again on the informal hearings. So by the way, feel free to stop me and ask a question anywhere along the way. You don't have to wait till the end to ask a question. Thank you. Okay. So let's get into this. If we go to the first, next slide, we're going to see, I'm sorry, Quentin, if you back up a minute. I didn't touch base on that first slide. Right. Big picture overall, the residential, the total residential value in town is up about twenty-four, almost twenty-five percent. Now, that's not the median value. We're going to get to that. That has to do with not only the new assessments, but also building permits, new construction, et cetera. But your residential tax base, if you will, is now up. Same thing on the commercial. And you'll see that thirty percent increase, but keep in mind that on the next slide, I'm actually going to show you that the median increase for commercial properties is about twenty-two percent, which is actually dovetails quite nicely with the residential. It's about the same as the residential in this particular revale. By the way, this seems familiar because we did this two years ago, but you won't have to do it next time for another three years. So we had that shortened schedule. So we go to the single family. Thank you. So here's your changes. Single-family homes are up about twenty-one point seven one percent. So. Now, if you notice, you'll see two families are up. Actually, the median on two families is up about forty-one percent. And we've seen that across the state. Our firm did eight projects in Rhode Island this year. And the multifamilies are up quite a bit. And that really reflects that apartment, the demand for apartments and demand for housing. So a lot easier for first-time buyers in particular to be able to do a two-family, let's say, rather than a single family. So that additional rent can really help. So that is very consistent, by the way, with what's going on around this state. And then the commercial, as you'll see on the far right, on the bottom there, is up about twenty-two percent. Commercial has been historically a lot slower moving. But the state has been flat for a number of years. And it's last, I've, I've seen in the last two or three years, we've started to creep up two or three percent a year. So now all of a sudden, it's kind of caught up. I want to mention that we're doing, this is based on a three-year sales study, by the way, both for the residential and the commercial. And we're going to go to single family by style. Now, this is interesting because it's, what we're trying to show here is what's happened to these major building styles. So for instance, Councilman mentioned his particular home went up X amount. You can see, for instance, we had a hundred and nine sales of capes during that two-year period. So we had a lot of data. And so those capes, the median sale price of those capes are now four hundred thousand dollars. If you slide over to the far right-hand column, I want to point out something called the COD. A COD is one of those statistics that's used and looked at by the client to see whether or not we're meeting the standards of the industry. So in simple terms, the COD measures how far we are off from the actual sale, plus or minus. So as a group of these hundred and nine properties, we're off close to seven percent plus or minus. And that's a, that's a good number in the sense that the real estate market, as a rule of thumb, varies about ten percent on any individual property, typical property. Now, if you're, if you're wondering where those statistics or who monitors those statistics or where we get those standards from, both the city and our, our revaluation firm works underneath a company, not underneath, but we follow the standards of an organization called the International Association of Assessing Officers. And these are the folks that are national and international and write our white papers, our, our technical papers and create standards for different-sized communities. So in this particular community, the standard would be that number, that COD should be under ten percent or any given population that's of a certain size. So in other words, what happens is if you get into a population of a dozen properties, then your COD may not be under ten. But the, the, the big picture here is just to let you know that there are policies and best practices that we're following set by another organization, not just, not just our firm. All right, we can go to the resales. Something we like to track, which is kind of interesting, this slide shows you the resales within that two-year period. It's a small subset of the data, but it's a nice check to see how the resales are doing based on the population of sales as a whole. So in this particular case, we broke it down literally by month. Since you'll have one sale that occurred six months apart or another sale that occurred eighteen months apart. We average that out and then extrapolate over twenty-four months. Those six properties increased about twenty-eight percent. So that does dovetail with what's happened in the rest of the population of sales.
I have a question. When you have the different styles, different styles of homes up there.
You can back up. You want to see that?
Oh, no, when you just, the one that you just had right now suffice where you had colonial's capes and everything.
Yes.
Are you taking the whole city or are you breaking it all, are you even drilling down and going by zip codes?
Not zip codes, but neighborhoods.
Okay.
So we stratify by neighborhoods. We stratify by building type. We stratify by things that you might not think of, grade, quality, a bunch of more minor things that we're looking at much more in depth. So yes, we do.
So for instance, I'll just take a cape. If, if in you, if, if there's only like two capes sold in a particular neighborhood, that, that's what you, that's what you go by or do you then tie it into the rest of the city?
So we're looking at it several ways. So first off, if you think about a house, if you build an identical cape in neighborhood A and the same cape in neighborhood B, the actual structure really is, should be the same value, basically. But the only real difference is the land pricing. So some neighborhoods are, the land valuation is higher than others, right? So we are looking citywide. We're also then stratifying down into the neighborhood to see what happening with land there.
And you said it was two, so it was two year, the past, so twenty-four and twenty-three was the, was the data that you used, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. So if, talk to my constituents or anything, if you were to go to, you know, obviously there's websites, Zillow and, you know, all these home.coms, whatever they are. If your, if your properties, if you evaluate, if you valued it lower than Zillow, you're, you should be very happy if you're a taxpayer. Because you, I mean, if you know you can get that money off of Zillow right now. Is, is that a way to look at it to, if I was, if somebody was calling me about their property and looking at Zillow and looking at what you did, is that a fair, is that a fair comparison to you? Is Zillow something that these people can use?
So here's how I would explain that. So keep in mind that this is a two-year sales study. Okay, so it's essentially an average over the two years. So we have an increasing market right now that although we haven't gone past twenty-four, I can tell you that we're still creeping up there. But having said that, Zillow is running their algorithms literally thousands of times a day. So the Zillow on April one, the Zillow value on April one, assuming they have good data, would be the value that they feel it would be on April one versus our value might be spread out over that, averaged over the two years.
Thank you.
Anyway, so the resales are sort of an, an interesting check. It's, it's a smaller sample, but to see whether or not they're trending along with the full population of sales. All right. So now we'll go to the medians. Okay. So this is interesting mostly in the sense is what is happening to these? Now that these sales have been analyzed, what is happening? Where are your homes? Right? So in East Providence now, a Cape Cod that we just talked about is essentially three ninety-six, so just about four hundred thousand. For you to drive down the street, a Cape now is about four hundred thousand. Big change over about ten years ago, right? So amazing.
I like that.
But, okay. So anyways, the, you can just, this just gives you an idea of the basic styles and what's happened to them. And so you know who this city is. Commercial also is, has got a increase this year up to, as we talked earlier, about, about twenty-two percent is the median increase in commercial values. And this slide is just interesting to show you some very specific examples of what's happening out there in your city. So, you know, these are fairly modest properties. There's a fast food restaurant in there. It's up twenty-nine percent. Got a good-sized warehouse in there. It's up twenty-nine percent. And then you've got a, a nice modest office that's up about thirty-seven percent. So. That is a warehouse. If you, if we showed you the other side of the warehouse, you'd see nothing but walls and small windows. So, but we have to. It's the, it was the better picture.
It's Valley Street. Yeah.
Well, I didn't put the streets on there.
Oh, no, no, I just, no, he wanted, you know.
Right.
I drive around a lot.
Yeah.
Now, question, our commercial property, I think you, I think you said your company does like six or seven other communities in the city?
This year was, was eight, but.
Eight, okay. How, how's our commercial rate compared to the other cities and towns?
Very similar, very similar. In fact, I just finished West Warwick and you're almost identical to West Warwick.
Well, that's good. So we're staying, we're, we're in the state norm. It isn't like our commercial rate is. So we're, we're, even with the bridge, do you take the bridge into consideration? Because I've read stuff, I've read stuff on that. Why, you knew that question was coming? So.
I thought about valuing the bridge, but I don't do negative numbers.
Okay, so, so, okay. Those are, I'm, I'm happy to see that because those are factors. Reading about, you know, infrastructure issues, it has an impact on, you know, rates and everything. So.
So it, it's actually a very interesting point because what happens is clearly the community is affected by this bridge, right? But we're focused on the past two years' worth of data. So for instance, if we did the same study a year from now, you know, the numbers may change. But as you're going to see later on in the presentation, this is a point in time that we're dealing with. And going forward, things will change.
So when will the bridge be done?
I am not a betting man, so I would not be able to tell you. So we'll go to the next slide and we'll just talk, brace, this is my slide where I try to explain in a nutshell essentially what we're doing here. So the purpose of having those folks out in the field is to take a fresh look at the building population and what's going on out there. That data that they come back with all gets entered into a, a database. We happen to, we nickname it, it's called the CAMM system, specifically for mass appraisal projects. In addition to these data collectors that are out there in the field, after their work is done, we send other inspectors out to what we call a drive-by as a, as a check, as quality control and so forth. So there's been two sets of eyes pretty much on every property. And that's to build that database with the updated, accurate information. Then what we're going to do is we take all that information and we, we've got all this key. key information, characteristics about the major parts of the house. What, what is the style? Do they have a deck? Do they have a garage? What's the condition of the house? Is it in good condition, average condition? Those kind of things. So, we fill all that in, and then what we're going to start to do is create a model. We're going to create a model, let's talk about this cape that we've, we've talked about. We're going to take tables and schedules where we can recreate and build a model to value that cape at or as close as possible to the actual sale price. So, we're going to calibrate these tables over and over again, so that we end up with a really good fit with the actual sale prices, which goes back to that COD I talked about earlier where for those capes, I think we were about 7% off, if you will. So, then what we're going to do is now that we have the models working properly and they're, they're a good fit, if you will, for all the sales out there, we essentially lock, we, we, we apply those tables and schedules to all the properties that did not sell. And so, this is where the equality comes in, where everybody's treated the same in terms of these schedules and tables. Once they fit the sales, we imply, apply them to all the rest of the properties that did not sell. The last part of that that's not in here is that always taxpayers have an opportunity for this informal hearing where they can come back and say, you know, something, I don't have this, or I don't have that, or the condition of my house is not as you maybe describe it in your database or in your letter. So, we'll talk a little bit why it's important, because I know a lot of people wonder about this. And I like to point out that most of the country uses this assessment model in the sense that they're using the property taxes as their main, you know, fundraising for the budget. And they've decided that one of the fairest things to do is value of properties at market value periodically. So, in this state, we do it every three years. But the, the longer you wait between revaluations, the farther apart these assessments are going to get from the market. So, if the fairness factor is bringing everybody to market at one given point in time, then after that, it's going to start to change, because the market will change and the assessments won't be updated again until that next timeframe. Different parts of the country have different timeframes for that. Massachusetts does a five-year revaluation with a, with an interim, if you will, every single year, which is a very modest, just analyzing the sales and see whether or not there's been any major changes, maybe in a style or a neighborhood or something like that. So, you get much more incremental changes in that model. Other states will go every 10 years. So, but the state actually did a study in 1998 that recommended a statistical every three years and a full every six years. And the state ultimately decided they would go three, three and nine. Anyways, the idea is that when assessments are brought back into line with market, you have a fair distribution of the tax burden. All right, now we go to the hearings. The letter, I think, is pretty clear. Give us a phone call, we'll set up a time, they can come down to City Hall here, sit with one of our representatives, representatives and, and explain why they feel like maybe there's a mistake, or, or maybe they just want to question the value, that's fine too, they don't have to have a particular reason. And sometimes they, certainly in many occasions, they can bring in information that we don't have, and we can update the record. And the, it's important to know that they can have an update, their, their value can go up or down in this, in this hearing, depending on what they bring to our attention. You have a question, sir?
Yeah, I do. What's the timeframe for that?
So, I believe they can call through April 10th. They can call through April 10th. Now, that doesn't mean they have to have their hearing by April 10th. The hearings are going to end roughly April 18. Yes, if, if, if there was an unusually high volume, for instance, you know, we can always extend that, the tax assessor will, Sarah will keep a good eye on that.
And the hours, what kind, what, what's the hours that they can come? It's set up by phone, or are you, are you going to be here in person like two, two years ago?
So, they're going to be here in person, in the same location, right near our office on the second floor. And the, the hours are Monday through Wednesday, 9 to 4. Thursdays, we're doing 11 to 6, and then Friday, 9 to 1. But we do recommend they have an appointment, so we can have all their information ready. So, we recommend that they call first, so we know they're coming.
What number would they call, Sarah?
They would call seven, 401, 737, 0300. That's not the history evaluation catalyst. Also, I mean, our office is always willing to help too, but right now they're the ones that are scheduling all the appointments.
I had several people come in, and to you last time through.
Which is fine, and then I relate.
And you helped them out a lot.
Yep.
So, it was good. You, Sarah, and that gentleman, Rich.
And they'll have two hearing officers present those days and times.
We have a board of assessment review, right?
Yes.
When do they?
That process starts after this, so after they have their informal hearing process, then I'll get all the numbers back from them. I can start working on the final parts of the tax roll. We send the tax bills out, then they have 90 days to appeal from the first due date, which is July 1st.
So, after the bills are out, then they can?
They can appeal to me. So, if, then if they're not satisfied with my decision, that's when we go to the board of review. You're welcome.
Thank you for answering that.
Well, you're up there, Sarah. First of all, thank you and your staff for the outstanding job you do. Will there be an issue getting the tax bills out in time with after the hearings and everything? Does, do you have enough time, or?
Yeah, I don't foresee an issue.
All right.
No.
Thank you.
When do you foresee the, the rate being announced?
So, usually the beginning of May, because they're going to go through their informal hearing process right now. Values could change. At the same time, we have still a lot of steps in the process that we're working on in our office. We have the annual returns coming in, we're adjusting those values daily. The best way to give the most accurate tax rate is when our numbers are as close to being done as possible. We don't want to misstate something, and then, you know, we find that we have to change it, and it's not, not a good change, you know?
Back, back to the process. Is, is it valid for people to think that, for instance, 2025, people assume that many homes now have updated to granite counters in the kitchen, bathrooms done over? For that person, especially the elderly who says, I haven't touched my house since 1955, is that something you take into consideration if you do the house visit?
We do.
You wouldn't know that if you don't go in the house.
If we don't get in, right.
So, in the case of the woman who called me, if she calls back and can get someone to come out, that's the type of thing she wants to say.
Right. We don't, we, we're not going to assume that. You know, we, we have building permit data, we'll look at that. If we don't see someone who's taken out building permits, we're not going to assume that they have a granite kitchen now.
Okay.
What we do catch sometimes is if a property has sold and it's listed on MLS, and we can see pictures of the inside.
Yep.
We will update that. That's what our job is. I mean, it's what our job is. Yeah. So.
Are we good? You going to continue?
Yes, just a couple more.
Sure.
Just a couple more things on this slide that I think are important. And it's good to note, one, that there may be some folks that can't come in, I mentioned earlier, they're welcome to call, and we will set up a phone hearing for them. Okay? So, the next thing on here that I wanted to point out is important is that pictures are great. So, a lot of folks want to come in and explain the condition of their property. So, the best thing they can do is literally bring us a half a dozen pictures, you know, we don't need 50, but half a dozen pictures. And, you know, that will help guide us in terms of, it's very possible that pictures can suffice and we don't need to do an inspection, so.
How do you know those pictures weren't from 30 years ago? Is that something Frank would do, this Frank?
Well, we, we have a certain amount of experience in that, and so we, we look at those.
It says Polaroid, you, you know, don't.
So.
Okay.
Right.
But seriously, I mean, there, there's a way to verify what people say.
If, here's what happens basically, is if we're, if we're not convinced by the information that's presented, and we may request an interior inspection as well. So.
Yep.
That actually is, is pretty much it, so. I'm certainly available for more questions, so whatever you got.
Any other comments?
I guess some things I want to present, but after you're done with your presentation, it's mainly just some things about exemptions that.
He said he's done, so if you want to.
Oh, okay. So, a lot, a lot of folks, they get that big number. We have a homestead exemption. So, take a number 200,000. Homestead exemption, you take 14% off that assessed value, correct?
Correct.
And that's what you get taxed on. There are other exemptions. So, if you're a veteran, if you're 100% blind, if you're a senior citizen, I hear all the time, seniors are getting taxed out at home, $41,325 off the assessed value.
Right, it comes out to about $650.
Yep, $609 on top of the 14%. So, just because you're assessed out of value, take 14% off. If you're a senior, take another $41,000 off. If you are a veteran or they got disabilities and stuff. So, you know, when I hear seniors are getting taxed out at home, I want to ensure that we're letting people know there are exemptions. When do they have to apply for the exemption by? Is it beginning of the year?
We do have a deadline on March 15th.
Okay.
We'll take them until we certify the tax roll.
Okay.
We don't want to see people miss out on an exemption. There, there are certain rules that, again, are state laws, so to own it by December 31st, occupy it by December 31st, if it's for the homestead and the senior.
Yep.
Ownership is always December 31st.
Gotcha.
But those two are owner occupied, the homestead and the senior are owner occupied.
And if people aren't sure of what they have, they can call and, and ask?
Oh, yeah, they call. We, yep, they call all day with those questions.
And to clarify, the homestead, you apply one time and it stays as long as you own the home?
Correct.
Same with being a senior?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, sometimes we find someone's renting a property, we try to reach out to them and, you know, clarify those things.
They're breaking the rules.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, and all this is on the website, people can find it.
And we keep it updated.
Yep, and I want to make one comment about the tax rate. There's 39 communities in the state of Rhode Island. Our current tax rate, $14.76, that's 14 other communities with a higher tax rate. So, we're about two or three over the middle. So, when people say we pay high taxes in East Providence, the data doesn't back that up. We're kind of in the middle. You know, our job is to show the return on the investment, make sure our parks, playgrounds, fields, roads are paved, stuff like that. But I think East Providence, our taxes are right in the middle. We're not a highly taxed city. The tax rate, when the assessments went up last year, the rate came down from, like $6, $7 it went down. So, these are just things that, you know, people get scared when they get this assessment, but I hope we can calm them down by letting them know there's exemptions that brings down the assessment, so.
So, a comment to that, we, we try all day long when, when people call, we do try when they call our office, the girls and myself, when I get them, we do try to talk them through that, you know? And we do, we had it on the notice, do not multiply this by the current tax rate. But you always have people that.
It's an American thing.
I get it, you know, I get it, it's frustrating, people think everything's going up, so.
We were founded on not getting, paying taxes.
Right.
Taxation without representation. So, it's in our mindset that taxes are, taxes provide services. Public education, public safety, you know, there's a reason we need taxes, public works, you need roads to drive on. So, it's a necessary thing, and I think you guys do an awesome job, and it is what it is. And we're here to talk to our constituents and, you know, let them know that it's not as bad as that initial assessment, it's thicker shock, but when you start breaking it down, it's like, oh, okay. Like I said, my house value went up $210,000 in four years, but I've only paid an extra $395 from what I paid in 2021. Well, I don't know what this year's bill will be, it's probably going to be a little bit more, but even so, less than 100 a year, you know, less than $10 a month.
It's an example that when the values go up, we try to reduce the tax rate the best we can to level it out.
And you guys do awesome with that, so. And that's it, I just wanted to add that, because we know there's a lot of people nervous, but.
Very good points. I mean, in terms of our budget, what, what does this process cost the city? Like, what are we paying catalysts?
So, for the full reevaluation, it was $560,000. So, the full revaluations are more pricey, because there's more manpower out on the streets inspecting the property.
Do we get state aid considering it's a state mandate?
Not for the full revals, just the statistical updates. Those are the only ones that they, they give us 60% of the cost back.
Okay.
So, did you have?
Any other questions?
Remember, the city council paid for that. It became under our budget.
You, you should. Anything you, you need to add?
No, I think that's it.
Process, so.
Just a question, so your office supervises their inspection, your vals?
Correct, well, we work with them, yes, we oversee the project.
Okay, thank you.
Only, should be, only the certified list comes from the assessors' office, so she's the ultimate decider as what the assessment will be. She has to certify it under state law, it's her number.
I have to be comfortable with the values, I, I review everything, I bother them, I, right?
You got the answer, thank you.
Another house, uh, housekeeping question. How long is the contract with this present company?
So, it goes out to bid every revale process.
So, the next, so in three years?
It will go out to bid.
Well.
And.
Yeah, they took, I, I hope, I hope to be here, if I decide to be here, I'm just saying right now that I'll, I'll voice my opinion that we stay with this company forever. I know there's state laws, I know there's state policies with, you know, well.
They have to go, it has to go out to bid.
It has to go to bid, no, but I'm happy with the professionalism of, you know, of the, of the presentations that's made twice, you know, in front of this council. I am also, I saw the people out, not in my neighborhood, because I wasn't home the day that they came by, and they did leave a yellow sticker, I can attest that. And, but I just saw the professionalism of, you know, when I drive around the other communities and I happen to see somebody, I, and talking to people who left them in the house, they were, the staff was quite professional and asked a lot of questions. So, they represent us out there and we got no complaints about any rudeness or anything like that. So, it's hats, hats off to you gentlemen.
Thanks.
So, Frank is doing a refi, so the higher value is helping him, so. That's where the kudos are.
The, the websites will, will be up to date.
They're up to date right now.
Up to date now, so, okay.
All right.
Okay, hearing no other questions, uh, thank you for your time. Appreciate it very much.
Sarah, if any.
Thank you for waiting.
Being nasty, let us know. And no problem knocking on the door.
I usually.
I know, I know you can handle them, I know.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, but no city employees.
No, but I appreciate it though, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you again, appreciate it. Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
For waiting. Okay, next item, go back to the agenda.
Public hearings, ordinance for first and final passage and second passage for discussion and possible vote. An ordinance in Amendment Section 18, Jazz 307, entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times of Article 10, entitled Stopping Standing and Parking of Chapter 18 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic is amended by adding thereto the following, Washington Avenue, East Side, from a point 260 feet north of Bullock's Point Avenue, northerly 30 feet, introduced by Councilman Fogarty.
Thank you.
Nothing to add, just thank you for advertising and my move passage.
Second. All in favor? I'm sorry, this, and we had discussed this before, so other comments from the council before we open it up to general public? So other comments from the council before we open it up to general public?
Russian 10th row wants to talk to you.
Seeing how 99 rows are empty, the city sergeant is in the back, a member of the press is here. Post, do you have any questions you'd like to ask? Seriously, no seeing and hearing, no questions. And this is advertised, so I think people, if they were read the the dockets ahead of time, they would know about it. So close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. There are motion, Councilman Lawson, do you want to move approval?
I move passage.
I'm sorry, I meant Councilman Fogarty and Councilman Lawson is back and he seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Enamnis, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item.
Continued business, none. New business, Mayor Communications, Chief of Staff Patricia Wazendi.
Yes, proceed.
I will make this brief as possible. So our February capital and finance reports you have in your packet, any questions, I can forward those over to Director Delgado if you have any questions with in regards to that. Our Remarkable Women Awards, you've probably seen each day leading up to April 15th, we've been announcing our Remarkable Woman, who, if you take a look at, have been doing amazing things in the community. The date, the type, date is Tuesday, April 15th, which will be right before your council meeting. We'll have the ceremony here and then we'll have the celebration out in the lobby so that way we can continue with the council meeting. A time will be determined. In terms of upgrades, so we were going to have, I just wanted to give you a few updates that we've received from Rhode Island Energy. One is the construction work that's beginning today, and this is no joke, this is, this is all real. Been trying to get evil fool something going on tonight, not very busy. Anyway, Greenwich Ave, so this is all the work that's going to start today. Greenwich Ave, Kent Heights area, there's going to be services of 128 of the 146 services are complete. Rhode Island Energy will continue working on Pawtucket Avenue and on Intervale. Waterman Ave, 63 of the 168 services have been completed. They will continue service transfers on the side of the streets and slowly start working their way onto Waterman Ave. Bradford Ave, Holland Ave, Boyd Street, Rhode Island Energy will be starting the main installation. Project estimated to take about 35 days. So taking us through about the beginning of May. Fall, in Bentley, starting main installation. The project's estimated to take a good 40 days. So I can forward this information to all of you as well. I think I may have, but I can do it again. Rhode Island Construction, Rhode Island Energy Construction also beginning, starting next week, April 7th, Wampanoag Trail. They'll begin work on Wampanoag Trail, digging ties and tie-in holes and pressure testing the newly installed gas main. So just in case residents see some work being done. This should take about three to four weeks. Once that's complete, Rhode Island Energy will begin to work on connecting the old main with the newly installed main. This will take about a week, this part of it. And then lastly, work beginning on April 29th, and I can remind the council during our next meeting, there's work that's scheduled to start in Goldsmith Ave. This is a small project that runs from about 62 Goldsmith to 150 Goldsmith, which will run service to 115 Goldsmith. So that's the construction update. In terms of trees, which is always a big issue, taking them down and adding them, just wanted to let everyone know that Rhode Island Energy's forestry team is going to start their tree trimming and removal this week. They may have already started. This includes the tree removals along the electric transmission right away in the areas of Rachela, Rachela Court, Kent Ave, South Broadway, Fort Street, Lion Ave and Fifth Street. This is going to take about a month to complete, just FYI. And so we're thinking April, end of April, early May. Rhode Island Energy is also working with the city to add trees, just to make sure that everyone knows, we're developing a plan that will provide the city with these replacement trees. So not just taking them down for services, but also replacing ones that will that have been removed. The reason for all of this is we're making upgrades to and replace, Rhode Island Energy is making upgrades to and replacing their electrical transmission lines. And this is just to modernize the infrastructure. And that's it. We will have the exact, we don't have the exact locations or timeline for the replacement of trees, but they will be determined at a later date and we can provide that at a later time. And that is all for me. That's all I have and no proclamations.
Thank you for those updates. Next item.
Number three, resolution requesting the General Assembly to support H 5687 and its Senate companion legislation related to funding for the underground alignment of a portion E 183 kilovolt electric transmission lines in the cities of Providence and East Providence, sponsored by Council President Rodrick and Councilman Fogarty.
Thank you, Councilman, unless you have something else to add. This is a longstanding request from the city of East Providence. Representative Dawson is trying to move this forward and is asking for our help as well as other reps and senators. This is the area down by the Takwatin Home, the waterfront, where they had previously agreed to put underground utility, utilities and cables, but for whatever reason, it hadn't been done yet. So now we're about ready to get this thing going and.
I'm looking forward to it. Any, any other comments? I believe National Grid collected 17 million, was it 20 years ago now, to bury these? So this is long overdue and I, I'm right behind them. Second.
Motion by Councilman Fogarty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And is there other, if there are no other businesses, we do have all the school committee and then you have the date to talk about. So let's hear from the school committee liaison right now.
So the biggest thing, my buddy Ben Nascimento wanted me to mention that I was at the Unified Game and it was a great game. The spring sports is about to start. Nothing major yet with, as far as the school to report, but the fields are gorgeous. They are gorgeous, the new seats, and I hope everybody, townie pride originated from our school department. And I hope everybody, if you get a chance, go watch these kids play. You know, whatever sport you're into, we offer everything from lacrosse to volleyball to football, basketball, baseball, and it's fun going to the games and you're interacting with fellow townies and these kids play their heart out. The Unified Kids are so awesome and all the people that, the coaches and stuff, today was Military Appreciation Night. They had the honor guard and stuff and so that's my push.
I think this week is the musical at the high school, Newsies.
Is it this week?
Yes.
I gotta catch up.
So if you get a chance.
Yeah, there's, between the arts and the sports and the academics, our school department's pretty great. You know, you're always going to have your naysayers, there's always going to be people that are going to try to find a narrative to make things bad. We'll have that debate with them all day, every day. I think our school department's doing a great job and then we're doing what we can, making sure they got money to renovate these buildings, making sure we're passing teacher contracts